I feel like I can't see here. And then, but if I put my glasses on, then my mask bongs them up, so I can't see anything. I'm trying, it's just a really, it's a new one and it's just not pinching very tight.
Is it just us or is Dave coming too? Okay, alright. Good evening, I'd like to call to order Village of Kearney Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Could we roll call please?
Wow.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Dorstopp.
Here.
Tab.
Here.
Daytab.
President, we do have a quorum. Everyone stand and join me in the pledge.
We should salute the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into the items that are listed on the agenda, I'd just like to publicly recognize that, that Tim Garrity has moved out, out of the village and has resigned from the Planning and Zoning Board. And thank him for his contributions and service over the years. If anybody knows of anybody that might be interested in serving, let, let Tracy know. They can, they can research or vet any potential candidates. Next item on the agenda, or first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the meeting that was held on December fifteenth. Does anybody have any changes or comments? If not, a motion to approve would be in order. By Mr. Campbell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paff. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh, next item is a presentation of zoning review findings on solar energy.
Yes.
Who's got this one?
I do.
Okay.
So, as part of the village's participation in the Greenest Region Compact, we have been working with representatives from Soul Smart to address local barriers to solar energy. And we're currently seeking a Soul Smart Bronze Designation. And part of that process is to present the Planning and Zoning Board with the Soul Smart's zoning review that they put together and that's in your packets. Uh, another part is that we have to draft, we had to draft proposed language for changes to our zoning code based on that zoning review. However, we aren't required to actually adopt those changes, it's just something to present to you guys. And so per that zoning review document, the following were considered medium or high priority changes that could be considered. Uh, there's two of them. One is to allow ground-mounted solar systems by right under certain conditions, that was one of the suggestions. And then the other was to exempt rooftop solar systems from screening requirements. And I had Tracy put up on the screen what our zoning ordinance currently shows for screening requirements for non-flush mounted systems. So, they have to be, uh, screened from, uh, someone standing at the property line essentially. And the village's zoning ordinance currently requires special use permits for all ground-mounted solar systems. As you may recall, only one of these ground-mounted solar systems has come before the Planning and Zoning Board and that was for Woodland School. But it was later withdrawn after receiving an unfavorable recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board. The zoning ordinance allows flush-mounted solar, that's anything that projects six inches or less. Uh, we, our zoning ordinance allows that on any roof. Screening is required for non-flush mounted systems and a special use permit is needed to get around that screening requirement currently. In July of two thousand and nineteen, the Lake County Task Force provided a draft ordinance which included updates to the original two thousand and eleven model ordinance. The main change was the suggestion that ground-mounted solar systems be permitted by right under certain, certain conditions. The model ordinance suggests defining ground-mounted systems as small, medium, or large based on the amount of surface area that they take up. And our zoning ordinance does have, does definitions for small, medium, and large, but doesn't directly tie them to sizes. Uh, the updated model ordinance also suggested allowing small-scale ground-mounted systems as a permitted accessory use in all districts. It suggested allowing medium-scale systems as a permitted accessory use in non-residential districts. Uh, one other big change that came with that model ordinance was to allow ground-mounted solar energy systems as principal uses. Either by right or as a special use depending on the district and the size of the system. And this would allow neighboring lots or outlots to contain solar energy systems. Uh, the model ordinance does not directly address rooftop solar screening requirements, but does suggest the following related language. Roof-mounted solar energy systems are exempt from zoning district height limits on structures with a flat roof. And shall not exceed six feet above the height of the building or the minimum height required to meet applicable building or fire regulations. And then staff also surveyed a handful of neighboring communities and found a wide range of regulations which can be found in the staff notes. Uh, so those are basically the findings from the zoning review along with some just draft changes to discuss. Um, and we'd like to hear your feedback or thoughts on kind of some of those suggestions.
I'd like to start, excuse me, I'd like to start.
I'll, I'll start. I, um, I'm having a hard time with the, I don't know for sure what we've got specified for, you said there was no size specified for small?
So, we have definitions for small, medium, and large, but no, it doesn't talk about, uh, like the amount of size that, that the, or the amount of area that the system takes up.
Okay, cause on this, um, one section here, it says a small scale could be up to seventeen hundred and fifty square feet?
Yes, and that is from the model ordinance.
Okay. I cannot see the.
Where's this type of square?
That's a lot of square footage, that's a panel that's thirty-five feet by fifty feet and I cannot see that in somebody's backyard. One of the problems I have with ground, um, solar is that we've tried to go green in two different ways at the same time. One is trees and now we're looking at solar and the two don't mix because, uh, trees around solar panels will block the light. And that's one of the things that I've been reading on and it says, one of the requirements is unobstructed land. So, not only are you covering up the grass, but you're cutting down trees around it in order to, um, have the, the power that you need out of the panel to make it worthwhile. So, to me that doesn't, doesn't jive with what we've been doing and one of the things that we as, as the Planning and Zoning Board have done is most of our judgments are on aesthetics. Um, when we were looking at signage or we're looking at building facades or fencing, we just ruled out, um, slats and, and chain link fence just on aesthetics alone. And I cannot see a big giant solar panel in my neighbor's backyard, especially when you're looking in a two-story housing tract. You're looking down into somebody else's backyard from your bedroom window and looking at a big giant solar panel does not sound appealing to me. Most of them that go on the roofs tend to blend in, I understand the problem here though, we're so far north that the angle on the roofs are definitely not optimal and they don't face the right direction in some cases. But to me, I cannot imagine a community with backyards full, filled with solar panels. So, that's my take on it anyway.
You'd like to go next?
I, I, the, the, the ground-mounted ones here, uh, I just drove by the, uh, school down the road there and it, it was like a word hideous. Uh, I, 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 I agree, we're, we're more geared to that aesthetics and if you have these ground-mounted solar panels, uh, it actually takes away from the aesthetic. I can't even imagine being in my subdivision first of all. And matter of fact, my subdivision is looking to make sure that we don't have them at our next four B, that's gonna be large and so that, uh, we can say, no, you're not gonna have ground mounted. If you put the one on the roof, then yes, then, you know, as long as you comply with the village is fine. But to have them just, people put them in their yards and stuff that, uh, I, I, I agree, I don't want people looking out my, at my bedroom window and I never seen this great big old panel sitting back there, so.
The, the only thing that I would point out is Mr. Paff, you had indicated that seventeen hundred and fifty square feet is quite excessive and, you know, I would tend to agree, that's the model ordinance, that's how they defined a small system. But you'll see from the summary that, um, we put together of what other communities, um, have, a lot of them have defined as a small system. Or what would be permitted on a single-family lot, if you had a twenty thousand square foot or less, um, lot would be a hundred square feet. So, that'd be like, kinda like a ten by ten shed.
Ten by ten.
Yeah.
A ten by ten shed and then, you know, they're more oriented at like a forty-five degree angle or whatever the angle is, it's probably more than a forty-five degree angle.
And also keep in mind, twenty thousand square feet is like a half an acre.
I'm sorry?
Twenty thousand square feet is like a half and, half of an acre, which is.
Or less. That's the, that's the size, that's Mundel, that's Mundellines ordinance, they, if you have a lot that's twenty thousand square feet or less, you can get a hundred square feet of, that's a small system of panels by right. They have a height limitation, they have a setback limitations, there's other things that you can put into there. So, I just didn't want you to get hung up on the seventeen.
I, I wasn't totally hung up on the seventeen hundred square feet, although we didn't, I didn't see that spelled out anywhere for us. And I was saying that if a small panel could go up to that size, then definitely I would not want that. I would certainly hope that if we do allow them, that we would, um, have them contingent on the size of the lot or in relationship to the size of the lot. Um, I do understand that, cause if somebody had a big piece of property, that would be no, no problem at all, it wouldn't be close to anybody, but.
Right.
In my subdivision.
Right, and that's, that's all we're trying to do tonight is to gauge whether you would, the board would be maybe receptive to, uh, setting up some potential thresholds for something that would be permitted by right based upon size of lot, based upon height, based upon setbacks and then, you know, potentially providing that to you for some.
Yeah, versus, versus now just allowing them only by a special use permit, which is what we currently do.
I'd have to see how tall a ten by ten panel has to be, I mean, it's got a pretty good angle, so I would imagine it's gonna be over the fence, fence height. I would assume, cause they don't start on the ground in most cases from what I've seen, they start a couple feet off. That also is an impervious surface, right? I mean, it, it covers up that ground underneath, so.
No, it, it, it wouldn't, um, usually, uh, there's definitions in there, but usually it doesn't, I mean, there's the post that it's set into the ground, but the rest of it, the water would flow off of the panel itself, so it's not considered impervious. Other than whatever part is actually the foundation into the ground that's taking up the.
Right, but it's not, it's not, the rain doesn't come down and cover that whole piece of ground, it runs down the panel then off the edge. So, it doesn't get that chance to soak into the part that's underneath the panel. I mean, at least from what I've seen.
We, we can take a look at, I, we haven't gotten into the details of how impervious surface, we wanted to really get kind of a feel for what you're thinking in terms of, you know, whether you still wanna keep these free-standing as a special use in all zoning districts? Or if maybe you're receptive to, you know, some height and size and, and locational standards. If you are, we can look into the details of how impervious surface is calculated on that. I know that I've looked, I've looked at a couple ordinances and I know one just said that it's not an issue because water continues to fall off of it, but we, we could look at that more.
Yeah, and I've seen the same thing, that typically they are considered pervious.
Do, do, do we know what the optimum angle is up in this area in terms of?
I don't know, I've seen free-standing in the area, um, and it's, obviously it's more than a forty-five, but it's, I, I don't know off the top of my head. I think the typical height, Claire, do you remember, are they between ten and fifteen, a lot of the?
Yes. Yeah, they're between ten and fifteen and our code currently has, um, kind of standards for if we do allow them as a special use. And I can double check, but I believe that our height limit along with the special use is, uh, fifteen feet and it is, yeah.
Yeah, fifteen.
Wow.
It's, it's fifteen feet?
With a special use.
It's like more than twice the height of a normal fence.
Again, there would be, i- if you were open to it, you could have setback standards again.
What, what's the limit on a shed height, do you know?
Shed just has to be lower than the height of the house. So, if you have a two-story house, you could have a, usually like a detached garage or something like that is going to be in the neighborhood of fourteen, thirteen, fourteen feet. And that's to mid-peak, not to the very, not to the very top.
Yeah, well, it, it's tall with the, with the pitch of the roof.
Right. Okay.
But it's a building, it's not, it's not an apparatus.
Just again, like we said, we're, we're looking to get feedback, I mean, you know, as you can see from these ordinances, there are a number of communities, um, that do have, allow them by right, um, with certain standards. There are others that, um, require, again, special use permits for all ground-mounted systems, just like we do currently. So, there's no right or wrong, we're just looking to kinda get your feedback and go from there.
Dave? So, as I understand correctly, we've already actually achieved the bronze?
No, well.
Did I misread this?
So, um, to achieve bronze and Claire can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have to present to you Soul Smart's analysis of our zoning ordinance and our deficiencies as they see it. Or areas that we could improve upon to, um, make solar energy more, um.
Would improve.
allowable, allowable in the, in, in the community.
Improvement in their definition is to make it easier.
So, we've done that.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I'm not sure if what we're doing tonight, Claire, does that qualify as putting together, like, some possible suggestions for code changes?
Yes.
That's all we have to do to.
So, it's just checking a box and a to-do list?
Checking off boxes, we don't have to adopt any of these or anything, we, just us presenting this tonight would get us to that point, along with some of the other things that we've already done.
Yes, and then if we were looking to get a higher designation, that's when additional changes would be required. Um, we're just, as Tracy mentioned, trying to get feedback and see, um, how comfortable everybody is, uh, not pushing one way or another.
Has the village board expressed any desire in terms of what, whether they wanna be bronze, gold, or silver, or gold?
Uh, I haven't heard anything in particular, um.
And, and I would say to get gold, basically, we have to just kinda say, you can do whatever you want and I don't see us doing that, so.
Okay.
I, I think realistically bronze is probably a, as good as we're going to get. Now, it, it's more than just, you know, getting the designation, we wanna make sure that we're providing ordinances that we feel are reflective of how we want our community to be in terms of promoting solar, but also protecting the aesthetics and property values. So, that's where that balance comes at, is to where, where do we set that? Is it permitted, is it special use, is it permitted with certain restrictions in terms of location and height and size? So, that's all we're looking for right now.
Dave? Yeah, I, I tend to lean more toward, I mean, if we're going to offer some latitude, I would, you know, tend to wanna look at, you know, in, industrial parcels or how we're handling industrial, whatever. Because it, it tends to be, generally speaking, I think, where there's the least amount of concern over, overall aesthetics typically. But there was a section here that, that addressed the table as solar as a principal use versus accessory use. And, you know, there's quite a number of boxes indicated with P for permitted as, as, uh, as a principal use. And I'm not sure if we wanna go down that path initially, especially on the residential side where we have, you know, ground-mounted solar permitted in residential as the principal use on the lot, do we, really? I don't think so. Oh, that's kinda what, what, well, that's, am I reading this wrong?
No, that's correct.
Yeah, and that would be like if you had a, a subdivision and they had like a common area or whatever, like, and they wanted to establish something for the community as a whole on that. You know, like, let's say in Elysian Fields, they had some common open area that was part of the homeowners association and the homeowners association wanted to put up some solar panels on that, that's where that would be.
Yeah, and there is a term for that, it known as community solar, where people can kind of buy into, uh, energy produced from that, um, as a neighborhood versus putting the panels on their roof.
And again, what you're looking at is the Lake County Solar Task Force, that's not what we're, you know, it's just one of, you know, of pieces of information that have been put together by the task force, by Soul Smart, for us to look at.
Just, I guess in summary, I guess I, I tend to lean to state kinda on the conservative side as it relates to what we do on a residential standpoint. And as I move from residential densities to industrial densities, I tend to skew the, the scale toward being, you know, a little more lenient. We'd have to dig in a little deeper to find out where the right ratios are, you know, whatever, but, you know, from a residential standpoint, I, I tend to wanna defend aesthetics and defend, you know, our neighborhoods from that type of thing, you know? Particularly as it, obviously as it relates to the ground-mounted stuff, you know, the, the things that are happening today in terms of rooftop and flush-mounted and that sort of thing, you know, that, that course is set and, you know. At that point, it's a personal preference whether you like the aesthetics or what the roof like, looks like when it's done after those are mounted, but it's the least intrusive that we're gonna, we're gonna have.
So, can I ask if most of the other PCB members feel the same regarding free-standing solar on residential properties?
Well, I mean, let's all just, I haven't, you know, Brian hasn't got a chance to talk yet, so, go ahead, Brian.
Okay, sorry.
Um, okay, no particular order. So, can, can we expand a little bit, we talked about this bronze status, I mean, what's the significance of any status? Does this mean we get a sign that like we put at the edge of town saying like, hey, we're a tree community? I mean, what do we get out of it?
It's being, it's being, um, promoted by administration, so we're just, there, there's many different parts of it, it's not just solar. And we're just tasked with the solar, I couldn't tell you what it means, it's, I, I think you get, uh, recognition in the, for nationally as being bronze designated for solar energy or something like that. But I think you just get your name on a website or something like that.
And it's something that we pursued mostly because we pretty much made it. Nothing we really had to do in order to, um, get the designation, we didn't have to change anything, we just had to present these findings and Tracy and I had to attend a training. So, um, it's something that we've been working with administration on, uh, the village has recently created a sustainability, um, board. And there's a handful of initiatives aimed at sustainability and this is one that came out of sort of that line of thinking.
Okay. That sounds like it's a community resume fluffer. One thing I think we should look into is just placing a moratorium on all solar systems until we figure this thing out. Clearly, we can work with village council on that.
Moratorium on all solar system, including the roof-mounted that are permitted by right?
Right.
Cause we get a number of those, we probably get fifty a year.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't be able to, so, right now, we get, like I said, fifty flush-mounted residential permits a year. I think over the last five years, we've issued about a hundred and forty permits and it's just steadily, you can see it ramping up every year. Those are six inches, as Claire said, above gray, above the roof, they're flush with the roof or like six inches max. You know, I'm not sure if those are of issue to anybody right now, I'd hate to kinda put a moratorium on that would stop that. Because other than those applications and a handful of commercial, industrial, that are not visible from, that are not flush-mounted, but they're pushed back into the middle section of the roof. So, they're not visible from the public, you know, the property lines or the public rights of way. I'd hate to stop those in order to look at some of the ground, ground-mounted and other things. Because we're probably not gonna be able to look at that in detail for at least three or four months. Claire's going out on maternity leave in a week, um, so we'll be down to one person and we can eventually do that if that's what we want, we think we wanna do. But I wouldn't put a moratorium or recommend us putting a moratorium on right now, um, because we're gonna be not allowing a lot of people to do things that I think that we've not had an issue with for the past five or six years.
I, I understand that, but then this goes into some of my other points, which is, you know, personally, I think the, the roof-mounted system should be flush only. And I think they should not be on the side of the building that faces the street. You know, that's just me, I'm just throwing this out, this isn't. I think they should only be allowed as accessory uses, there shouldn't be any community solar. And, and that's it. And they're in a prohibition, an absolute prohibition on ground-mounted systems, whether it's residential, commercial, industrial, agricultural, whatever.
So, no special use for ground-mounted at all?
I, I, I think they should just not be allowed, period, whether it's permitted or special use.
Okay, and then for the, I just had a question regarding the, um, flush-mounted, did, did that include for industrial and resid, uh, industrial and commercial?
Right, I mean, I don't have an issue with flush-mounted systems provided they don't face, you know, the main street that the building is facing.
She's asking, do you feel that way for commercial and industrial?
The, like ones that typically have more of a flat roof, where it would be something like there.
They have a flat roof, but they're not.
Cause most commercial industrials have flat roofs.
Yeah, and they're not gonna be flush because of that, they have to be at an angle.
One, one of the problems with restricting them facing the street is there's only certain, um, roof facing certain directions that you can use. So, if their house faced south, I think it is, isn't it, then, then they're out of putting solar on their house.
I will tell you, um.
So be it.
I, I, I will tell you that there's one in my subdivision. And it's on Country Trail about halfway between Oak Lane and where Country Trail turns into Sunnyside, it's on the south side of the street. It's on the south side of the street, okay? So, it's, it's slanted roof is facing north and it has solar panels on that north elevation.
Really?
Yeah, and they also have big trees in their front yard too, so, I mean.
And it looks delightful.
Oh, it looks wonderful, yeah.
So, somebody was a good salesman.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I, I, I think if anything, we need to look at tightening down, you know, the stuff that we have in there. I think absolutely special use permit at a minimum is in residential area and we need to tighten down what the, the, the size guidelines are. So that we're not negotiating everyone one at a time. And we need to have some pretty tight standards so that we don't have a lot of latitude to let somebody convince us that something's better than it is.
I have a question, when you spell out, um, surface area, that seven, like for instance, the seventeen fifty, is that the surface area of the ground that it, that that system takes up or is it the panel size?
It's the panel size.
Okay, I wasn't sure how that was spelled out there.
So, we checked off a box so that we can be bronze because we're now more informed in terms of what it is. We don't have to do anything to our ordinances to become bronze, but I think you've piqued a lot of interest, if you will, um, in our desire to make sure that we don't end up getting sloppy, um, on the aesthetics. Cause I, I agree with Brian and it's, it's a tough one with solar because there is something supposedly about the way it, it faces the, the sun. But, I mean, most builders go through great lengths when they're building a house, they don't even put plumbing stacks, roof vents that, on, on the roof that faces the, the street elevation. All, all that stuff is, is behind.
Excellent point.
Or, or hidden in the eaves.
Right.
I mean, the only time you'll ever see anything from street side, um, occasionally, you, you'll see the top of a chimney because it has to be above the peak of the roof. But that chimney is never, ever, or seldom. because it has to be above the peak of the roof, but that chimney is never, ever, or seldom, I should, I should never say ever, but it's seldom on the elevation of the roof that faces the tr- the street.
Well, it's on the side of the house, I guess, but.
Oh, I mean, like, if, if, like, just picture the outside of this building. And that Oak Lane is the main street, if there was a chimney coming through, it would come through on this side of the, of the,
The peak.
Of the ridge line.
I agree.
Okay, you might see the top of it, because it has to get above the ridge line for ventilation aspects of it. But, but you, you would never see the, the plumbing stacks for, for um, the air that has to vent out the plumbing pipes, you'd never see it on that side of the roof.
Yeah.
It's always on this side, and if there were roof mounted vents, they would be on this side, on the backside, they wouldn't be on the front side.
I agree with you, I, I mean, I don't like solar even on the roof, but it's, I find it far preferable to ground mounted solar.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I mean, if I had to pick one over the other, I'd definitely pick the roof mounted.
Right. So, and, and the, and the problem is like, the situation I described before, there are some scrupulous salespeople out there that are, are, are selling people the villa goods, that, oh, we gotta be solar, we gotta be green and everything, and don't get me wrong, I think we need to be solar and we need to be green, but we need to be responsible about it.
Right.
And um, for someone to have a solar panel, just to get the energy credit or whatever, when you, you look at the installation and it's, it's bogus, um, there's, there's something wrong there.
Yeah.
So, and I, I'm all for supporting countywide efforts to, to cluster regional solar panel farms or wind farms and that kind of stuff, so that we have alternative energy available to us. But it, it's gotta be in a, a controlled situation that, that doesn't affect the aesthetics of the community, in my humble opinion.
Yeah, I mean, if you have your own farm.
Yeah, and, and put it on a farm, or stick it in the middle of a, stick it on a reclaimed landfill that's, used to be a garbage dump or whatever, but um, so. So in terms of direction, I think we don't want to loosen anything, Tracy, um, but let's look at, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I, I think what I'm hearing is, let's, let's make sure that we're really tied on the guidelines for the special use aspects of, you know, what we can approve or not approve or recommend or not recommend.
Well, it sounds like you want to tighten some of the permitted.
What's that?
It sound, it sounded like you wanted tight, to tighten some of the permitted things.
Absolutely.
So not, it sounded like, what I'm hearing is that you want to further restrict them from being on the front, on like roadways frontages, so whatever frontage, if it's a corner lot, then there's two roof frontages that couldn't have them have solar panels flush mounted, um. Is that the direction that you're going, and then also maybe looking at the percentage of the roof, right now it's eighty percent of a roof area, I, I didn't know if I heard anything about that, um. I just, I, I, I'm trying, I'm just trying to get a feel for what you're looking at us maybe tweaking or talking about tweaking to roof mounted flush. And if you're looking at us making industrial and commercial have to be roof, flush mounted, that's just gonna prohibit them, because those are flat roofs and they just can't meet that six inch projection.
But, but if they have the screen, like, like your example, if they have the screening, like, I mean, there's, there's flat roofs all over town that have their entire HVAC sys- HVAC system mounted on top of the roof, and you'd never know it was there.
Right, but if you defi- right, if you say that you can have them and they're not flush mounted, as long as they're screened, that's fine.
Yeah.
I just heard, we don't want anything but flush mounted e- everywhere.
And that's what our current code has, is that.
That's what I said, because I just, you know, but Tracy raises a great point for industrial and commercial areas. But, you know, I can't see that applying to any residential area, and this goes back to my original, you know, my second comment, which was put a moratorium in place until we figure all this stuff out. And it goes beyond just commercial and industrial, it goes even to residential, even with flush mounted, because, you know, I think we're in consensus, and I can't speak for everyone, but everyone seems to be on board that they shouldn't be on the side of the house that faces the street. Right now, clearly, that's not the case.
Even when it doesn't make sense.
Right. So.
I, I would, um, just, on the industrial, commercial, personally, um, when we're talking like Business Park or something like that, I really don't have a problem with the solar panels on the roof. I don't think they are all that obvious if they're not, like, the one that you have there, I think, you know, you could run panels all the way back across the middle of the building and not be all that intrusive.
So I guess I should ask, do you know that Target and Home Depot have solar panels on the top of their?
I did not, but I wouldn't be surprised, and I don't have a problem with that.
They do, and they probably are about four feet tall.
Right.
But they're set back far enough from the front face and the side faces, you don't know they're there.
Right, they're not large ones like the ground mounted ones that the school has, where they stand, how tall are they?
No, they're roof mounted, yeah.
Those are really tall.
I, I, I think the theme that you're hearing from us is aesthetics is important.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Exactly.
So I mean, I don't think any one of us would be against any industrial use in town, having solar panels on the roof, as, as long as it didn't disrupt the curb feel of the village.
Right.
So, does everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess the question is, is do, now, now that I know the direction that you're going, which is to further restrict, um, or potentially tighten up our ordinance, now I can see the reason that you might want to do a moratorium, so I guess the question is, is that your recommendation to the village board, so that I could then, Claire and I can go to the village board, or the um, the village attorney and say, the PZB, you know, looked at this, they don't want to um, lessen our ordinance, or make them less restrictive, but they're actually talking about maybe tightening up some of the, you know, ordinances that we have regarding what's permitted by right, and they recommended that we adopt a moratorium until we can do so. Is that something you want staff to go to the attorney and the board with?
And I would, I, 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 I think so, but I would couch it in the framework of, as we're gaining more experience with this stuff, we're seeing examples in town where
Mm-hmm.
Things are happening that we didn't anticipate.
Right.
And it's, it's not, it's not a good look.
Okay, well, that's all I need to know, all we need to know, so.
Okay.
And I just didn't.
Now, the, the, the moratorium, it'll probably be, I don't know what the length of a moratorium can be, but I can just tell you based upon Claire going out and the projects that we have lining up, I'm not sure that this is something that would be super high priority in terms of, you know, with actual projects coming in, I mean, I would certainly try to get it as soon as I can, but you know, I'm not sure if we can adopt a moratorium for six months versus three, because three, she'll still be out on maternity leave.
I, I think six months is probably a reasonable time.
And that's understandable.
Because it's how long it takes to get things done.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just curious, how many permits do you have right now, like?
Um, currently, I know we just had two last week.
Yeah, I had one this week.
And they, they come in probably at least one or two a week, I would say, I mean, like I said, they're, they're picking up.
These are specifically rooftop ones, for the last three or so years, we've had quite a few.
Yeah.
Does anybody want to add anything else?
No.
Okay.
I agree with, I agree with the moratorium.
If we can make it happen.
Yeah.
So we checked the ti- we checked the tick box.
Yes.
We ticked off a checkbox.
Big giant check. A small check, a big giant check.
A bronze, we're striving for third place.
There you go. The gold check that we put on.
I hope we get pins or something.
Okay. Let's move on to um, the sheds.
Yes, so, in response to a request that staff look into the possibility of limiting the number of sheds that can be located on the property, staff surveyed ten communities to determine their regulations for controlling the number and or size of accessory structures. Um, a few communities that stood out were Lincolnshire, which limited the total number of accessory structures to two. And they had a list of all of what they determined to be an accessory structure or not. Um, and then Vernon Hills limits the number of sheds, playhouses, or treehouses to one, and the number of detached garages to one. However, they don't limit the number of accessory structures, which can include um, pools, greenhouses, chicken coops, things like that. Uh, Mundeline prohibits a detached garage if there's a functioning attached garage, and then what Gurnee currently does uh, is we do not limit the number of sheds or total number of accessory structures, but we limit the number of detached garages to one. And then most communities, including Gurnee, do limit the square footage of accessory structures by establishing a maximum percent of the yard that can be occupied by the accessory structures, and or placing a cap on the square footage, we do it through maximum building coverage, and then some other communities do that as well, or do it through maximum floor area ratio, or maximum impervious surface ratio. Uh, and so, basically with this, staff does have some concerns with limiting the number of sheds and or the total number of accessory structures, uh, some of those are, as mentioned, as other communities do, we would have to come up with a list of what is considered an accessory structure, and there would be some decisions that would need to be made, such as uh, things like dog houses, chicken coops, pools, gazebos, et cetera. Another difficulty with this is that a lot of people don't have an up-to-date plat of survey showing all structures on their property that exist, and if they have a fence, there's not as much ability for staff to even go out and see what they have, we do have aerial photos, but trees can obscure those, and we don't always have the ability to go out and take a look at what every single property has. Um, and then, there's also the issue that sometimes aerial photos show what appeared to be a structure, but may not actually be that. And an instance of this is the property that kind of triggered this discussion actually has an above-ground planting bed that uh, can't be seen from the street due to a six-foot-tall fence around the rear yard and from an aerial view.
The four other sheds that they have, though.
Yeah, this is just one example, um, but uh, it appears to be an accessory structure when really it's a raised planter bed, so it's kind of just the ability to um, figure out what is and isn't an accessory structure based on the resources that we have to do that with. Um, and then, if a limit is placed on the number of sheds, residents may try to pass a second shed off as a playhouse or another type of structure that doesn't have a limit. Um, and then lastly, a limit on the number of accessory structures could create a significant number of non-conformities, as the village has a number of properties with multiple accessory structures, and when the zoning ordinance was updated in twenty fifteen, the village board had a goal of trying to minimize the number of non-conformities created with that. And also, Gurnee did remove the floor area ratio requirement with the twenty fifteen update. And this is just because we don't always have copies of home plans, so sometimes it's difficult to correctly calculate what the FAR is, so that's just something that staff wanted to point out, because some communities do heavily rely on that uh, FAR requirements, but our code currently does not. And then, staff believes that a number of lots where there are concerns about accessory structures probably have either installed structures without a permit, or have violations on site. Therefore, they should be addressed by code enforcement, and that appears to be the situation that started this inquiry. In that specific case, the homeowner appears to have installed at least several accessory structures without the benefit of permits. And code enforcement is uh, currently reviewing this property and will make contact with the owner to determine what, if any, violations exist on the site and work towards remediation.
Okay.
Where do you even start?
I don't know. We'll start with you, Brian.
Thank you.
Well, it's only fair you went last, last time.
I, I don't even know where to start, um. First, I guess I'd like to ask, does anybody on this dais have more than one shed on their property?
I don't even have one.
Okay.
I have one. I wish I did, but I don't have one.
I, I mean, I, this is just gonna be kind of like extemporaneous speaking here, but I know most modern subdivisions prohibit sheds through their restrictive covenants. So I understand that there's a situation here, probably in the village, where we're kind of dealing with newer subdivisions versus homes that were built a while ago.
Nineteen eighty-nine.
But, I, I don't see any reason that somebody needs more than one shed on their property that exceeds a hundred square feet unless they're a hoarder. I, I mean, come on, most houses that are built nowadays have a two-car garage, right? With an ample-sized driveway. If you've got too much stuff in your garage, you just park your car out on the street, um.
No, no, driveway, not, not street.
Or, yes, driveway, excuse me. Um, so I'm, I mean, truthfully, I like sheds about as much as I like signs and fences, actually less, so I would just prefer to just prohibit them, period. You know, I guess I could wrap my head around one, if it was a, you know, no bigger than ten by ten, and no more than one story. Because I heard somewhere earlier that the height of the shed could be the height of your house.
That was the garage. Oh, the shed too?
Any accessory structure.
Any accessory, okay, I, I, sorry, yeah, you're right, okay.
So, you know, we don't need a two-story shed in anyone's backyard.
You have to have a fireman's pole on it.
I've never seen a two-story shed.
Well, that could be a combination playhouse and shed in one.
You know, and as far as, and then we get into that, but then again, it goes into defining, well, what's an accessory, what's included in, you know, air quotes accessory structure, I mean, we should just have, you know, one accessory structure, period, whether it's a shed, a playhouse, a chicken coop, greenhouse, whatever else, and that's it. So, those are my initial thoughts. Oh, and I know this isn't part of this, but I saw that we limit the number of detached garages to two. It doesn't say in here, but I hope that that's, doesn't apply if there's already an attached garage to the home.
We limit the number of detached garages to one.
Right, but so if the house has an attached garage, can they still have a detached garage?
They can.
Okay, we should get rid of that too. Even if that creates a bunch of non-conforming uses, who cares? Once these garages fall apart and have to, you know, be replaced, they just can't replace them.
And I will say that we have a lot of properties where there's a gar- detached garage and a shed. We have a lot of property, not as many of these, but we have a number of properties where there's an attached garage and a detached garage.
Correct.
And I understand that, but I don't know that we need to be.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
Right, I, but I just don't know that we need to be fearful of non-conforming uses, I mean, we're trying to advance the community, you know, to modern day, not keep everything like it was in the forties, fifties, and sixties, when these areas were originally planted and developed and these homes were built. So. With that.
With that, I'll move to Dave.
Is there a way that we can like carve this up and subdivide this topic, so to speak? This bucket seems so big and captures so many different things, including sewing pools, and how we ended up defining how many accessory uses, if you have a pool, if we're counting accessory structures, if you have a pool, then all of a sudden you can have a shed, or, you know, whatever, so. Is there a way that we can really try to separate the shed topic off from everything else in the accessory bucket?
Well, you could do what Mundeline did, or whoever that was, that li- that limited the total number of accessory structures. And by that, they then defined what is in that pool of accessory structures. And by that, they then defined what is in that pool of accessory structures that is limited in terms of the number. And that's where they carved off pool and some of those other things that are, you know, not kind of structure structures. So that's how they did that, so they created this pool of structures that they're gonna limit the number of them. And defined what those structures are, detached garage, playhouse, um shed, whatever else it was. And that's what you would, I would think probably how you would have to do that, if you wanted to not include some of those things. Like pools and fences is act, fences are actually in our accessory structure chapter. It's an accessory structure to the house, I don't think you wanna just say you can have a fence and not, that's it.
I. They just, I don't know, it just seems to me like we're, the biggest thorn in everybody's side seems to be the shed topic. I'm always upset about the fact that there are people with pools or.
I think it's sheds and garages probably, sheds and detached garage.
Sheds and detached garages are combinations thereof.
And playhouses, yeah, yeah, I I I agree, like pool's different in my mind.
Yeah.
Maybe chicken, I don't know, I mean, there are a lot of other structures, like the the one that we have that kinda caused this. They also have a greenhouse.
And like a bigger dog house kind of area, it looked like to.
So, yeah, so that's.
The menagerie. I don't know if I can get my head around this.
Yeah, it's kinda the same way we felt when we first started looking at it, it's.
I just don't have anybody who needs more than one of any of them.
Right.
Todd?
I, I'm with everybody else, it is, it is a a hard part of things, um I think. I think of my friend who has a detached garage, chicken coop, and a shed on his property, not in the village here, needless to say. But his is a two story shed, so, yeah, and to me, it looks all cluttered, but he loves it. But uh I don't think we want something like that, I I think we need to somehow narrow it down to, you know, one shed, you know. But again, you're looking at, are you putting pools into this, can that part of everything? Over here, we wanna promote sheds, that's for sure.
I thi- I think that we could probably, given time, come back to you guys with something. Cause I I'm thinking of one of the communities that we surveyed, they had a provision in their ordinance. That if you had an attached garage and it was being used as part of the house. And not as a garage anymore, that you could have a detached garage, so, you know, the situation where they convert the garage into actual living space? Then you have, then you, then you have to remove the driveway to that, that area. And then you can get a detached garage, so I think there might be things that we can do that you might be receptive to. Or, you know, that might be getting toward what you're trying to get at, and then we can maybe try to narrow down those structures. That, you know, that are really kinda causing the problem, and maybe put a limit on those. Um I don't know that it's gonna be one, you know, at least that we would come in with, because you're gonna have in that group, you're gonna have probably. Chicken coops and sheds and maybe dog runs or, I don't even, you know, I don't know what else we.
Bees.
I I don't know what else we might have, but I think we can narrow it, obviously, right now, we don't have any num- any restriction on number. Other than detached garages. And the only other way we can limit that is through maximum percentage of the rear yard that can be occupied. And the ISR and the building coverage, so we can try to get a handle on putting a limit on the number. And then come back to you with something, um I think until you see something, it's gonna be hard for you to react to anything. Cause like you said, it is kinda this big subject, and maybe if we try to narrow it down for you and come back with something. Now, whether the board's gonna support that, I don't know, but we can certainly, you know, that's what your job is, is to make recommendations to the board. And um I think they would listen to you, so, I mean, that's what you're here for, so.
Um, yeah, some of my thoughts were, I I would not wanna include a fence as part of an accessory structure. Um, I don't begrudge anybody a shed or a playhouse, I have neither, but I would not want to restrict that. I think one shed is enough for anybody, um I guess it needs to be tied somewhat to the lot size, and I think you brought that up. I mean, if you live in some of the areas here where you have huge lots, um maybe you would need another one. Especially somebody who uses a barn or something for their tractor or whatever like that, but that's, that's not gonna come up too often. But I think if you limit whatever it is to one, you're probably not gonna have as many problems or very few problems like you would now. I mean, this property that we're talking about is sheds, it's three sheds, right? I mean, if you would have limited.
Five.
Right, there might be other, you know, structures on there, but if you limited it to one shed. I think you'd limit most of the problems anyway, but I think limiting it to one of each and a a max number of accessory structures. Would be a decent way to go.
I I kinda concur with what I think is general consensus, um something reasonable in size. No more, no more than two, a pool wouldn't count, um but, you know, I I could see a situation where someone would quote unquote need a shed. And and would enjoy a gaze- a gazebo, so I wouldn't want them to have to to choose between one or the other. But I think, you know, do some research, you know, I I think there needs to be an overall aggregate square footage. In terms of how many of these there can be and how tall they can be. And um in my mind, the the max aggregate square footage would be the size of a of a of a two car standalone garage. So sixteen by sixteen, whatever that, whatever that comes out to be, but um, you know, do do some research.
Okay, and we can look at doing, as Mr. Paff said, larger lots.
Six, you can do sixteen by sixteen.
Or ten by ten.
Can't get a car into ten by ten.
A shed?
Okay, okay, I'm trying to be reasonable, I'm trying not to have.
I'm not trying to be unreasonable.
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to have a hundred and fifty people in this room.
What we should do is request a moratorium on all additional accessory structures until we can figure this out.
And the the only thing that I will.
They don't get a permit.
She's not laughing.
The only thing that I will say is just remember that when we passed our RV ordinance and required them to not be parked outside. Other than if you have one, the the concession on that was put them inside, and that's why we allowed the detached garages. To, you know, at that, with those limitations, so.
I say if you have room for it, go for it.
Always change our mind, that's the wonderful thing about government.
That's right, it's it's always easier to loosen up and batten down, but I think we need to. Declare that we have a state of emergency here.
I agree.
I'm being facetious. All right, um there's no one here from the public, so I'm not going to open the floor to the public. Um next meeting date on the calendar is the second of March, are we gonna have anything?
We will likely have a non-public hearing items.
Two or three non, non-public hearing items, and then the next meeting, potentially a public hearing item.
The next one after that?
So, yeah, yeah, March second, probably three non-public hearing items, March sixteenth, probably a public hearing item. And there's a ton of stuff that's kinda lining up for a public hearing, so.
Okay, all right, it was weird not having a meeting for two months.
It was.
Ninety-six dollars and ninety-six cents after tax is awesome.
On that happy note, uh thanks, everybody, uh motion to adjourn would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, everybody's.